We call this meeting to order. At five oh five P M. Roll call please.
Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez.
President.
Trustee Ramos. Trustee Doppler.
President.
President Calhoun.
President.
Dr. Curry.
President.
Item two, approval of closed session agenda.
Second.
Moved by trustee Lopez, second by trustee Doppler. Do we have any discussion? Dr. Little. Trustees Lopez.
No.
Ramos, Doppler.
No discussion.
No discussion for Barbara Calhoun, see no discussion? Have we received any requests to address the board of trustees for closed session agenda matter?
No.
No. Trustees, do we have any requests for future agenda items? Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez.
No.
Trustee Ramos, trustee Doppler.
No.
President Calhoun, none. I will adjourn the closed session, recess the closed session in accordance with the Ralph and Brown Act, Government Code Section five four nine five zero, and following an Education Code Section seven two one two two, to discuss or take action on the following items. At five oh five P M. I call this meeting to our operator at six oh five P M. Roll call please.
Dr. Little. Here. Trustee Lopez. Here. Trustee Ramos. Trustee Doppler. President. President Calhoun. President Dr. Curry.
President.
Trustees. Do we have any comments? Can we do this in the second meeting? I am pleased to report that as you play your votes as the government code section five three nine five seven one one. Nothing to discuss. Item seven oh one, people over the station. Dr. Curry, do you have any good directions or additions to the event?
None.
Can I have a motion? Motion by Dr. Trustee Doppler, second by trustee Lopez. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Calhoun. Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. You, Doppler, some discussion? Well, Calhoun, no discussion. See no discussion, please place your online vote. Item eight oh one, request to address the board of trustees, agenda and non-agenda matters. Pursue the board policy two three five people. Other participation, this is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board of trustees on agenda and non-agenda matters. Each speaker will have three minutes. Still, still your breath. What is our name for the end of the time? Jacqueline Barra? All right. Is this the mic? Oh, it's not the mic. Well, anyway, I hope you can hear me. Good afternoon, everyone. To the board of trustees and everyone present. My name is Jacqueline Barra. And I would like to say to Dr. Curry. Dr. Curry, you do not know me, okay? I didn't know you. However, I do know when it comes to returning the name of Emily B. Hart Holyfield's name outside of the library, you are a person of untruth. I was told once or another time you lived in Compton. However, you do not live here now, and neither does that trustee. I have raised six children. Been buying a home, paying taxes for over fifty-four years in Compton. Along the way, I met a young lady whose name was Emily B. Hart Holyfield, who was raising her children, buying a home, taxpayer as well. She was a special educator who decided to change the dynamics of this college. She sat here for over twenty years, and you, you have done all, and in those twenty years, she did all she could to eliminate, you've done, no, you have done all that you can to eliminate her name from being replaced outside of the Compton College Library. I sat here while you used a so-called facility committed to lie on a grieving family to not replace Emily B. Hart Holyfield's name outside, not on the wall of the library. We have had enough of your shenanigans, okay? And like I say, I'm not going nowhere, and I hope you board members understand that because she is part of our history. And good night, you'll be seeing me again, okay?
Thank you all for seeing this picture of our beautiful Ms. Emily Hart Holyfield, whose name was very prominently displayed in the old library, and it's no longer there, unfortunately. My name is Lethicea Voskas Wilson, and I am a resident in the city of Carson. I'm a lifelong member of this community. I was actually born in Compton when Compton had a hospital, Dominguez Valley Hospital. I attended elementary and junior high school in this community. I have been a lifelong member of this community college district. I'm a taxpayer. I own property across the district. And I'm also a former member of the faculty here. I'm an educator, a former member of the faculty council elected by my peers at this college. And I come before you out of concern because today, I don't believe that the administration here has heard the sounds of this community, which has been calling for the restoration, the restoration. It's the restore Emily's name campaign that this community has been fighting for, for the past how many, three years. It was led originally by Ms. Holyfield herself before she made her transition, and has been led more recently by her dear friend who promised to take on the issue for her, Ms. Jackie Barra. And so we come before you again to request that her name be restored in its rightful place. Her full name restored, that's what has been requested, that her name be restored on the library. Emily B. Hart Holyfield is what has been requested by the family, and this is what the community is asking for. Ms. Emily Hart Holyfield was the first woman of color to serve on this community college board as this community transitioned. We all know this. She deserves respect in our community. She deserves your respectful consideration of this matter. This matter has been discussed, I believe, in open session once or twice, and the community has been completely ignored. This is absolutely unacceptable. We're all taxpayers here, so each and every one of you either get paid by us as taxpayers. Your benefits are paid, your retirements are paid for by us taxpayers, and so we have a voice here. And so we are respectfully requesting that you restore her name. Thank you.
Deborah, ask you?
Good afternoon. Since October twenty-two, I've been addressing the, that under the leadership of the current Board of Trustees Administrators, CEO, Special Trustee, Compton has failed to thrive. Enrollment, as I've reported, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, eleven thousand. Now it's forty-one and some per the chancellor's office in this state. It's forty, let me see. Forty-one eighteen. That's from the council, the California Councils for Community College Chancellor's Office. And I stated before, from the Integrated Post-Secondary Education Data System, U.S. Department of Education, graduation rate of fourteen point forty-seven percent. I read to you before regarding allegations made by the nation. Talking about Compton College Administration is purposely destroying the college structure bit by bit, firing instructors under the guise of low enrollment and using a task force created to monitor program. This was twenty eighteen. I read that already. I came across something, and as I stated in one of my presentations, that meeting with the faculty that was stated that the Board of Trustees Administration failed to meet with them as they had information on how to thrive with this program. But you refused, don't even talk, don't even discuss with them. You seem to go along with everything Dr. Curry and the administration. And who is the administration, I ask? Well, we're still governed by El Camino. They're governing the operation of Compton. They are parasitics to the parasites to this community, siphoning money from the taxpayers. We go down, they flourish. Also, can I make it real quick? Well, the faculty is not happy. New leadership at Compton College. Replace, replace them with leaders who will turn our beloved college back. We can improve from our current state of peril. New leadership will be able to do the work what Keith Carey and Sherry Berger failed to do, which is increase recruitment and retention. Okay, very good. Thank you for the time. Talk to you later.
I know that a while back, they did a report about veterans. And I remember, I don't know if it was Dr. Paul Flora or somebody else, Chief Cox. And I was talking about it, and I was giving examples about what organizations we get in contact with. And they had a veteran resource center right there in Gardena, right past the front lawn. Then I talked about the West LA, the Long Beach area. And I also talked about other things, and I was wondering if I could get an updated report on what has been happening with all that information that I was giving out and then we unveiled themselves. And then they round the window a lot, uh.
Item nine oh one, minutes on August fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, board of trustees. Can I get a motion? Move second. Moved by Dr. Little, second by trustee Doppler. Do we have any discussions? Do we trust the call? Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Doppler. No discussion. And item one, no discussion. Please place your online vote. Item nine oh two, minute on August fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, board of trustees retreat. Can I get a motion? Okay, motion by trustee Doppler. Trustee Calhoun, second. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Calhoun. Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Doppler. Well, we got one, no discussion. See no discussion, please place your online vote. And I forgot to mention that the reason that I am not called in trustee Andre Bravo name, is he's excused from tonight for this meeting. That's why I was skipping on his name. I know he kept looking at me, and I said, let me explain why I'm not saying it. Item ten, reports from representatives and associated student government reports. First of all. Academic Center report. Document.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. Dr. Curry, my report will be short tonight. I'm Dr. Minad Ramadovianu, academic senate president. I just wanted to share that faculty are noticing the slide, actually not that slide, about twenty-plus per twenty-three percent increase in student enrollment. And we're, we're feeling it in our in-person classes. Our online classes were already doing quite well, so it is encouraging to see the increased number of students on our campus. We are still very grateful for all of the free food that we get. It's convenient, and I have to pack lunches when we're here, longer hours. We were also very happy that five of our teaching and learning plans were approved. Among them, we have one that focuses on our Asian students, providing additional resources for them, visibility on our campus, and one that I'm particularly very excited about is one that will be focusing on increasing student success and student retention in our courses. Currently, we're recruiting faculty members who are interested in participating in this, and we're very grateful that they will be paid their hourly rate to be doing this kind of work, which is very, very meaningful. And that concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. DCFE Certified Employees Report, Jeanette Morales. CCCFE Classified Employees Report, Jacqueline Barra. Item eleven, presentation. Compton Community Council District Student Housing Project. Dr. Curry, can you please introduce the buyer?
Yeah, I went to maybe play that once with our chief facility officer, who was going to be presenting for tonight. The board requested earlier this year regards to updating the housing project. And so we have an architect of the project for Compton District today.
Good evening. I would love to present an update on our student housing project. So this evening, we have our amazing architects, HPI. And it's the three of them. I know Larry and Lynn and Jeff. That's what I was gonna say. So welcome them, and I'd love to hear their presentation.
Thanks, Linda. Thank you, Linda.
So as we, as was said, we'd like to give you a, just kind of an update on where we're at through the design process. So my, my name is Larry Frapwell, president, principal, HPI Architecture. With us here tonight is Jeff Bakarin, director of design, and Lynn Padilla, who is serving as your project manager for, for this project. So, you know, just a little history that, you know, the, you actually started this project back, and I don't know exactly when, but I know you were having conversations in twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen, and you positioned yourself in a way that when the state came forward with, with the opportunity for dollars, that you were able to successfully pursue an SB one sixty-nine grant, which I'm sure you're all aware of, and, and that was awarded in twenty twenty-two. And what that grant laid out was the need to provide or commitment to provide two hundred and fifty beds of student housing with three different unit types, which Jeff will kind of walk you through here today, how, how that's evolved. In addition to that, there are other spaces within this complex of student housing that are intended to support student engagement and support student success by how those, those spaces are arranged and contribute to, to student community. So what we're gonna do tonight is Jeff is gonna walk you through where the, how the design has evolved from the, from the SB one sixty-nine grant application, it was built upon that grant application to get you where you are today. Lynn is then going to talk a little bit about where we are in the process, in the entitlement process, DSA approval, and the schedule moving forward as we move towards construction and occupancy. And with that, Jeff?
All right, I'm gonna go ahead and start with a, a brief project overview. So the project is a three-story building. It's approximately eighty-nine thousand square feet. Part of the building will be built on the site. The units will be modular, meaning they're gonna be constructed off-site and then stacked in place. As Larry mentioned, we have a, three different unit types. We have fifty traditional units, fifty semi-suite units, and fifty studios that total two hundred and fifty beds. Amenities that are gonna be included in the building will be social lounges, study rooms, shared kitchens, a grab and go, and then mail, laundry, and common bathrooms. To get a little more depth in the units, so what you're seeing up here are the three different unit types, starting at the top left is what we're calling a semi-suite unit, and that's gonna be double occupied. It also comes with a private restroom, but no kitchenette. The middle one is the traditional unit. That's also double occupied, meaning it has two beds. It doesn't, it has no restrooms and no kitchens, but shared kitchens and restrooms will be provided down the hall. And then the third, the third unit is that studio apartment, and that is single occupied, and it will come with a kitchenette and a private bathroom. And we do understand there's a desire to support students with dependence, so we are working with the state on that, but we have provided spaces for kids to play inside the building as well as outside in the secured courtyard. And these studios here are also set up to accommodate an extra bed for somebody with a child. Give you a little overview of the context and how it sits on the site. So it's located at the north end of campus, just below parking lot F and next to parking lot E. It's adjacent to that primary pedestrian spine that connects back into the main part of the campus. And the building's positioned to allow for a second phase to the south. So what you're seeing up there in sort of that green area just below the building there, it is showed green, but when it is built, it will most likely be decomposed granite of some sort there. It's, it's organized around a central courtyard. Again, it's secured with the main entry to the building opening towards the instructional buildings on the left over there. And there's also a secondary entrance to the north opening towards parking lot F. We have some renderings to share with you here. There's a, a aerial view. It starts to set the building in context, to give you a little sense of the scale, and shows you how it connects to the primary pedestrian spine right there on the bottom left of the, of the rendering. We are showing a yellow accent color right now. That's continued to be studied. That color will change. We're gonna be providing some options for that. But it's intended to support wayfinding it, to the building here. You're also seeing the landscaping that here, the landscaping is, has been selected based on the campus standards. We'll talk a little bit about the interior layout and the design of the building. Essentially, it's organized into two different wings. The traditional and the semi-suite units are located in wing A, which is that L-shaped building sort of on the bottom on that, on that image there. And, and they're closer to the common restrooms and the kitchens, since those units don't have those within the units themselves. The studio units are located in wing B, which is that separate bar to the top of the page up there. And, and the amenity spaces are spread throughout both of those wings. They're at the knuckle, sort of in that gray area of the L-shaped building there, and then also at the end of wing B, and those again include the social lounges, study rooms, shared kitchens, a grab and go, mailroom, laundry room, and admin spaces. We have a lot of interior renderings, but we selected a few just to give you a sense of the character of these spaces here. This, this one that you're looking at here is actually the main entry lobby, as you would see it right when you're entering off that pedestrian spine. The, the interiors are designed to have a clean and contemporary feel. The spaces maximize natural daylight and encourage the social engagement between students. The colors and materials are still being finalized, but the intention is to have them very bright and vibrant and highly durable to minimize maintenance. In terms of the layout of this lobby space, security and visibility to all the common areas was, was one of the driving factors. So you're kind of seeing that reception area in the center of the page there, and they have visibility to all areas of this lobby space. This is, this is in that same first floor, but it's looking back towards what we're calling the grab and go station, just like the exterior, you know, the accent colors. There, there, we're still finalizing those as well, but the intention is to use those colors and the materials to help wayfinding within the building. Furniture that is being selected is, is, it's being selected to support independent, both independent as well as group studies, so there's some flexibility within the seating there. And there is opportunity at this ground floor to connect to that exterior courtyard in case, you know, you have any special events or what have you. That grab and go also has the ability to connect to that courtyard directly. The next view is one of the social lounges at that knuckle of the building there that we, we described earlier. And we actually have several social lounges spread throughout this building. The activity, they're, they're intended for activities and, and hangout areas as well as some study areas that are enclosed for, for the quiet. Again, to encourage the social interaction between students. We did locate them in the building in such a way so that they're gonna minimize disturbance to, to people within their units as well as maybe people studying. The spaces, some of the spaces on the upper floor can also be reconfigured so they can accommodate different uses, such as lectures or all-floor meetings. And at the third floor, there's also an exterior to connect to an exterior balcony. You can also see in this image, sort of off in the, to the left there, that's a shared kitchen in the background, so the idea is to have visibility into those kitchens and provide option, opportunity to connect and have students either, either eat in the kitchen. and have students either, either eat in the kitchen or bring, you know, bring things out into the social spaces. And with that, I'm gonna kind of walk around a little bit of the exterior architecture. I'll describe that. So we're gonna start, again, this is the, this is the main entry, as seen from those instructional buildings there. So the yellow, again, the yellow accent color, we're still studying the, the actual color. We're gonna be providing some options for that. But again, the, the intention is to have the materials and the colors to be compatible with the, the campus architecture, but applied with a little bit of a residential feel to it. So you're gonna see some of the same brick that you see on, on other buildings on campus, some of the same metal panel as well. We're also including sustainable features in the design. So there's gonna be sunshades. You can see some louvers where we have large pieces of glass. And again, what you're starting to see within that sort of yellow piece there at the third floor is that exterior balcony. And again, we're taking things like security and safety definitely in consideration there when we design that. This is a view now from parking lot F. It's not a primary entrance, but it is gonna be, it has a lot of potential to be used by quite a few students, as well as potentially families that are gonna be coming and going through here. We did design the building very thoughtfully, so it doesn't really have a back, so that all the neighbors around you, surrounding the project, that they have a nice, nice view of the building as well. There's an opportunity for branding and school logos, as you can see here. And we're still also working through the specifics of, of that logo that's gonna be applied there. Service areas will also be thoughtfully screened with landscaping. And, and again, you're starting to see some opportunities for natural light coming into even the ends of the corridors as you circulate through the building there. And then the last, the last view I'm gonna share with you here is a view of the courtyard space. Again, this is a secured courtyard. It's, we have landscaping in here, and we, we've designed it in such a way so that it provides opportunity for some different activities. There's gonna be shaded seating areas. There's just some barbecues in there, places for kid, for students to hang out, as well as potentially kids. If, if people have, have kids to bring into the, to, to the project, then there's an opportunity for, for that. And again, secured area. And so with that, I'm gonna hand it over to, to Lynn here to discuss a little bit where we are in the schedule.
All right. So I'll be talking about the project's schedule. The construction documents were submitted to DSA in April 17th this year. We received comments and we are from DSA and we're currently picking them up. We anticipate getting approval of increment one, which consists of the demolition, soil mitigation, and underground utilities. We, we were, we anticipate beginning approval by October 3rd. And increment two, we anticipate getting approved by December 11th of this year. And increment two consists of the new building and site improvements. Once we get approval, we'll go, we anticipate going out to bid early next year from January to March. So we're showing a three-month bid period and then a construction period between April 2024 to May 2026.
And I think that ends our formal presentation. We have a bunch of slides tucked in the back. We're not gonna try to answer any questions you might have, but we'll keep it brief.
Board members, do we have any questions? Just because. Dr. Little. So. The modular. What, what is the makeup of? The building, the modular style?
No, so they're, they're actually units that, the living units themselves are gonna be built and constructed offsite in a factory. And then they're gonna be shipped to, to the site on a truck. And one module actually consists of a unit, a piece of a corridor, and another unit. So it's a pretty big piece that they're building, and they essentially bring them onsite, sort of wrapped up, and they use a crane to, to pop them in place, kind of like Lego blocks. And then once they stack them all up, you know, then they come back and they put on the nice, the nice skin of the building, the facade of the building, and they finish them that way. The, the units, the modules themselves, it's a wood, it's a wood construction unit, yes. Right? Yes.
I find that.
I would, I would say that, you know, typically those wood frame buildings have an expected lifespan of probably thirty, between thirty and fifty years. It wouldn't be any different than what you would find as a wood frame building, and the finishes and materials wouldn't be any different than what you would find in merchant-built housing, any, any place around the city.
So for years, over years, because they are modular, it kind of fits through their strategy or plan for this money.
Absolutely. And they would be fixed just like, like what you would consider typical stick-built construction. So modular, stick-built, means you're putting it together one, one board at a time kind of thing. The value of this is just the expediency of getting that, that, those modules into place, the quality control that you get in a factory setting versus doing it onsite. Now, so there's a number of, of potential benefits to doing it modular.
So the, the studio units actually come with a private restroom as well as a kitchenette. And then the semi-suites come with a private restroom. We also have the, the traditional units are the units that do not have either of those, and they would use the common restrooms or the common kitchens in the building. That's correct.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yes. No.
Dr. Little, can you put? Have you got the board, you put? Um, yes, again, thank you. I'm glad to see this coming to realization. Much anticipated. But I, I just wanna ask one back to the, the modular. So the construction with the units, is that included in the April 24 through 26 time period? So the deal is that all, okay.
Yes.
Okay, so that's all included in that.
Yeah. Correct. That includes fabrication time offsite, the, the shipping. So what'll happen is they, they would, contract will go in and do the, all the utility work, the foundations. And then the, the other pieces of the building that are not housing units will be built onsite. So those things will be constructed onsite, and then the units will come in and begin to stack up and stitch together.
Thank you. And then also too, like on, um, um, Wing B, because I know it's kind of separate, so it has its own, it has its own access. And the, um, the stair, and maybe I'm not seeing it on the, on the floor, but the, um, the stair, the stairwell or the elevator, that, they have their own in that wing, right?
So the, the, yeah. You wanna stand on that?
Yeah, yeah, sure, sure. Yes, it is. So what you're not seeing on this image, or it might be a little difficult to see, is that the, the Wing B is actually connected to Wing A with a bridge. And there is a stair on Wing B on the very right of, of the design. So kind of it's highlighted in green a little bit. Yeah, so that's. Correct. Yeah. And then once you go across the bridge, there's another stair to get you down. And there is an elevator in the main lobby of Wing B as well, that gray area.
Okay. And then, um, and then RA, I'm not sure if I've seen it, but will there be an RA like on each floor? Would it be separate in Wing D? Or will the RA be responsible for saving that entire floor?
So the RA units would typically be these, in those wings, in, in whatever quantity that you really want from a, from a management standpoint. And then oftentimes, we provide an RD unit, Resident Director unit, and that would be in Wing B, one of the larger units.
And we're still, Dr. Curry, we're still pending the, from the state, if we can, if this is gonna be student housing, or if we're gonna have it be family housing.
Yes, we completely suit that.
It is completely student.
Yes, and we have, you realize Oliver W. Conner's statement to the other bride, uh, housing person's defense.
So with this, within this presentation, so are we to, we're not gonna, so this is just us imagining the play area? Or will the play area be part of this? Part of the layout?
It's part of the layout.
So students that have dependents, so why, so my question, so the point that I'm getting at, so why would we have housing, so why would we have a play area? If we're not, if, if this is just gonna strictly be student housing?
Right. So in Wing B, those units are sized such that simply through furniture, furnishing, without changing units, without changing the unit size, you can still accommodate the number of students that you've committed to in the SB 169 grant application. But by providing a separate bed in there, you could support some dependence, right? As long as you're still providing it at the, at the rates that you've committed to at the state, you're still providing the 250 beds of on-campus student housing. And, and that's a conversation that's ongoing.
Didn't the law change?
So we, we had, so what we've been doing, the top of the chances office in regards to law and interpretation of the law, as raised to that part. In our last conversation with the chances office, it's, it's not, it's not clear from my perspective, the way they're articulating it, if we can. And so we're the team that has those conversations.
Okay, last, I, I ask one question. Man, I'm sorry, I, I just have, I just have another question. And then just to, again, to, just to clarify, the grassy area, and I'm on the, on the site plan. So the grassy area, the way it's kind of designed, is if we want to expand, then we can expand and, and continue to grow. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
But, but it will not be grass at the time of construction. Yeah.
The way it's situated, it's designed to.
Yes, the area below Wing A, moving down towards Student Services, was planned in a way that you could support a second phase or additional cohorts of student housing.
That's all I have. Thank you. So first, we could have student housing with children. Then the law changed and said we cannot have children in the student housing. So we had to find something else, another location for the parents that have children in order to live. Now we're being told, you're looking at the law better or get confused.
I think we're seeking clarity. Is that? And, and it doesn't change, it wouldn't change the unit size or type. This is consistent with the grant application.
Did I go out of the law, the spirit of the law? I'm just asking the question, because once these get built, and if you don't fit that into the end, I mean, no student with children can be in that facility. We have to find another location which you're looking at for our students to go, because we have work, correct?
Correct.
So right now is up in the air about the students that have dependents.
Right, right now, my response, if I didn't say that, right now, until we get approval from the state in writing that we're able to do that, we're offered to our Oliver W. Conner state, they provide the housing. But in event we are not able to do that, the playground will be available for the second component of this facility. We add an additional bed. But right now, we still have certification for the chances office in writing. So publicly, I don't wanna say we're gonna do this until the chances office and the department of finance is able to find, sign off on that, right?
So we'll get it before you have to bid, correct? Which is next year, right? So we'll have that answer. Okay. So which units will not have a restroom in it?
So the traditional unit, which is the one in the middle, does not have a restroom in it. It has two beds and desks and, and space to store their clothes, and there will be shared restrooms down the hall.
Men, women, and transgender all.
That's to be determined.
That is a operational, right, decision that, that you can make.
It's designed to support any combination or however you'd like to use it, though. So that's gonna, when the operator comes in, they will, they will help make those decisions.
I was just curious why. Tell me again, why no restroom in the traditional? They're not large enough?
They're not large enough. And so when you submit your SB 169 grant application, these three unit types were defined. And so this is consistent with the demand study and, and the rates that were established and so forth.
So semi-suite and studio will have restroom.
Correct.
The traditional will not have a restroom. They have a common restroom that is on the floor. That like, they not have to be like runway.
It's very close. In fact, if you go, if I go back to the, the plan here. So if you look at, for example, one of the smaller plans on the right side of the page, that darker orange color is the common restroom for that, that area of the building in the center.
And all this is open view, right? When I say open view, open space, they can see from one end to the other.
Quarter.
That's correct. Yeah, it is.
Okay. On this one right here, this, this. What is, what is this? Somebody's gonna be sent here. What, what is that?
So that's the reception area right there. And, and, and so from that reception desk, you can see everybody coming in and out of the building. You can also keep an eye on everybody in the social lounge right next to it. And there's also a location for security there.
Okay, so when are the doors locked and do, and will people have keys? Or is it, you press it a button, it don't get in? What time of night? Has that been discussed?
Yes.
The locks and the mechanism, so what time?
That's that time, the time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'll be card readers.
It is electronic locks, and so you will have the ability to set those up in any number of manners with any number of levels of access control.
I like the colors. I like colorful stuff. And I think a lot of people do too. We're tired of the draft. Why they.
We're with you.
Colorful, so if somebody go in there, it's like, wow. This is, thank you for the report. I have another question, but you answered it. Lighting doors, are these lighting doors, any of these lighting doors? Or are they all doors?
Swing doors.
Zero.
The doors to the balcony on the third floor are lighting. They're like.
So you can open that common space at the third floor out to that balcony.
Yes. What, you have to, does she have that one?
Common for everyone.
There are.
On the, the ones that are.
Correct.
Yes.
Yep.
One that don't have a restroom.
Correct.
There, okay. Thank you for this report. I would like, I'm looking forward to this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
We are at item 1102, 2023 to 2024, Comptess Community Council District. Final budget. Dr. Curry, can you please introduce the bio?
Yes, tonight we have a little more about budget since the, since last spring. Today, Dr. Nasser will provide the accreditation on the 2023, 2024 final budget.
Thank you, Dr. Curry. Members of the board, present you the budget in. Okay.
This one.
Yeah, thanks. So through this presentation, I'll go through the budget assumptions. We discussed those at the last meeting. I'll give you an overview of the general fund budget and other budgets, and then I'll answer the questions you may have. Our estimated beginning balance is about 19.7 million. As you know, we're in the process of closing the books. We should be closed by the end of this month, and we'll have a better number then. Estimated revenue is at 50 million. Our budget, of course, in terms of FTS, we are held harmless at 5980. COLA approved by the legislature and signed by the governor, 8.22%. Cal PERS, uh, increase from twenty-five, three-seven percent to twenty-seven percent. Dow Stirs remains unchanged. Utility increases budgeted at twelve percent. Three new faculty positions, women's men's soccer coach, uh, medical terminology, nursing. Augmentations, four hundred and fifty thousand, as you can see, the first item, hundred thousand enrollment. We want to make sure that we persist on bringing more students, uh, be budgeting two hundred thousand for student meal program, and you've heard our esteemed academic, uh, Senate President talk about meal and, and how that helps us all, and certainly it is primary for the students, and so we want to continue to support them. Uh, our goal, um, of, uh, having eighty-five percent of our resources, uh, as open educational resources, we committed twenty fifty thousand for that purpose. Uh, we continue to pay off our line of credit, one point six million, uh, as you had approved two years ago in FY twenty-six, will be fully paid off, three years ahead of the schedule. Two hundred and fifty thousand for OPEB, and two hundred thousand for person-stir stabilization. Uh, these are reserves for Enterprise Resource, uh, the Personnel Commission, and Fire Academy. And then three point one million, it transfers from a thousand of property level to insurance, a hundred and fifty thousand for child development, a hundred and fifty thousand for student technology, again, focusing on student needs, uh, we are supporting, uh, the technology needs of our students, so we're committing a hundred and fifty thousand for that purpose. Uh, transfers to capital outlay, um, as you know, the, uh, construction costs keep going, keep rising, and so we're committing funds for the housing project, the PE complex, and the visual and performing arts. So how does it look like in terms of, of the budget, uh, this is the summary of the full budget. Uh, beginning balance of nineteen point seven, revenues of fifty million, expense of fifty-four, uh, changing fund balance, and then ending fund balance of sixteen point one million. The restricted funds, initial, beginning fund balance estimates at six and a half million, and we're hoping to end with the six point three million dollars fund balance in the restricted fund. Uh, general obligation bond funds, as you know, you approved, uh, for us to grow and issue new bonds, as you can see, we're depleting the funds, uh, the current funds that are available, so we will be going out for additional funding, but this is the current budget. Uh, financial aid, uh, we dispersed about ten million dollars to our students in financial aid, and so that's, um, how the financial aid fund, uh, looks like at this point. I will answer any questions that you may have.
Trustee, do you have any questions, do you trusty, Carl? Trustee Lopez?
In the positions that you have listed, I have your call what flight it was, um, you have the women's and men's soccer coach, is that one person to do both positions? Is that the vision?
That's correct.
Trustee Doppler?
Uh, I, I just, um, just clarification, so let me give an example of, um, potentially, we was, um, state, federal, but for local, would that be like some additional funding that we get?
Local.
And then just ask, like, what would local be?
Local funds will be primarily, uh, property taxes.
What?
Taxes.
Oh, 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 okay. Okay, property country, local, okay, got it. And, um, just a on, um, I remember the amount, it's, um, ten thousand, I believe. So that's the task, got it? In the breakdown of the financial aid, in terms of our, um, expenditures that we carry, in terms of the, um, the financial aid or the additional funding that our, um, students receive, how can we, where would that be? How will we actually report that in, in the budget for, um, in our budget?
Are you referring to the student?
Yes.
So are you like, just, the compensation, who's in charge of funding?
No, the, like, the local funding that we actually provide to students.
Are you talking about the emergency aid you provide?
Well, I mean, I get, I know what you're saying about, uh, not the emergency aid, but like with our, the home or W honors, the, um, like, the, the funding that we have that we provide for students to, like, kind of offset them for working, like our EOPS, the, um, EOPS and fairs, that type of funding, is that listed? How and where is that listed in the budget?
The, for, for example, the EOP, I was asking the other question, credit bodies, but sure. So for example, EOPS has fun, provides correct proceedings. So that's included in restricted program, and their finance aid is able to disperse it through the finance aid fund, which I think is fund seventy-four. But they're able to disperse it through finance aid. Are, are the first students go through finance aid?
Right.
So then also, if you have a student for, like, the alternative Connor, or a scholarship program, that's normally dispersed through the, um, the foundation disperses. Uh, and then they work with kind of they assure their communication regarding to the amount of experience first.
All right, thank you, that's all I have.
Oh, yeah, uh, I have a little question, and you got another one?
I see it. No, I see it on here. On, on slide number eleven.
So, uh, I, Dr. Williams is not here, so I don't know if you have any questions, but I have no questions.
Thank you.
Now, item twelve is the public hearing. That's what, threw me off, I thought one go before here, but I guess I'm wrong. Item twelve, the public hearing on the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, Council Community College District final budget. The public hearing is now open. That means anybody in the audience that wish to ask a question about the budget can come up and ask any question. No, I'm sorry. Comment, thank you. Wow, thank you. Comment about the thank you. The budget that we just discussed. Is there anybody on the phone would like to make a comment about the budget that was just discussed?
Okay, uh, I want to ask a question. When will this budget, what he just presented to us, when, will that be available for us to view, because we're going kind of fast there?
The budget is available online?
It's online? Okay, it's online now, so I thought I heard him say he's still working on something. So it's final, and what's the year for this budget, you say, is that twenty-three, twenty-four, or what?
Correct, July one, twenty twenty-three, and June thirty, twenty twenty-four.
And you, uh, also mentioned about additional bonds.
Correct.
To finance what?
The construction classes.
To the construction for this residential?
No.
No?
Dr. Anderson, it is not a back and forth.
Sorry.
Oh, okay, I'm just asking for, for clarification as you requested. Anybody have any comments or questions regarding, since I don't have, or we don't have, it's all online, it's going rather fast, so I was just asking for some clarification. You know, because we are, like she said before, we all taxpayers, and we don't like our property taxes going up for something we don't know.
We are, when we get ready to adopt the budget for this evening, we're gonna vote. Dr. Curry is going to talk more about it, and how we define it on the website, and you can see it all.
He's going to talk more about financing or obtaining?
Let me load it here, so we can go.
Okay, very good. All right, and I just it's, how much, I don't know if this is something that I how much are we still owing for, uh, El Comino? For us, we owe them, now correct, we still owe them, Dr. Curry?
Let me load it in.
Okay. In his, okay, very, okay, okay, while you're at it, I'll ask for that, and also El Comino, and it's just another expenditure, but that's okay. Right, thank you very much.
Ms. Deborah? Deborah, there you go, right there, thank you, thank you so much. You're welcome. Um, any other comments, no comments? The public hearing is now closed at seventeen, that's eleven five, before three. Three, okay. The public hearing is now closed. Okay, I'm going to item thirteen. Item thirteen is adoption of the twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-four, Council Community College District final budget. Can I get a motion? Motion. May I get a second? Motion by trustee Doppler Moore, second by trustee Lopez, do we have any discussion, trustee Carter? Dr. Lopez? Trustee Lopez? Trustee Doppler Moore, no discussion, trustee, y'all really know this session, please place your oh, Dr. Curry is gonna comment, and then you can place your online vote with Dr. Curry then just now.
Okay, so the, the budget was developed, uh, according to what our official recognition is to two hundred regarding to the, the budget calendar, presented to the board, uh, for approval. Uh, as related to the question that was brought up, or the comment in, the public comment regards, not public comment, in the public hearing in regards to the budget, the district does not pay any funds to El Comino College, uh, when the partnership was dissolved in, uh, June seventh, two thousand and nineteen, during the twenty nineteen, twenty-seventh, eighteen, nineteen year with last year remaining payment to El Comino College for the partnership. Uh, I think this is a, this budget for the district, we'll continue to work with the planning budget committee, as they're concerned about the budget, uh, and we will follow up with them at a later date. I recommend approval of the budget.
Please place your online vote. I didn't hear it. We are now at item fourteen. Which is the consent agenda? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. Move by trustee Lopez, second by trustee Doppler Moore. Trustees, do we have any items to discuss? That means we want to take anything off. Trustee, sue trustee Carter. Trustee Lopez?
No.
Trustee Doppler Moore?
Uh, fourteen oh one. Fourteen oh one.
Anything else?
Did you not? Okay.
Fourteen oh one.
That's it.
All right, fourteen oh one, for the. Just please, uh, so, I do not have anything that, well, if my question turns out right. If anybody's interested, uh, the questions that I asked and I were answered is at the back of the table. If anybody would like to see the questions that I asked, and the answers that was given. All right. Oh, so can we do your fourteen oh one, and then we'll approve?
Yeah, it's just a, it's just, it's just a, uh, question, it's on. It's about, um, can I? Uh, it's about the, oh, the non-resident, um, tuition. I know that we have expanded, um, our we've expanded our two-year Oliver W. Palmer, um, Oliver W. Palmer beyond , um, students within our district, so we'll open it up to everyone, right? So then, the, the non-resident tuition, is there a, the, um, the rate, say from like out of state? Students, is that a, is that just like a set fee?
So yearly, the board trustees approve the non-resident tuition. Uh, normally it's done sometime February to March of the year, to put in a policy. They're like, they're great community colleges, uh, work here, charge for non-resident tuition, and we bring the board accreditation. And so we brought for the last year, this past spring, regards to the non-resident tuition. We have to invite the board on March first.
And what is, um, approximately, is there a, do we have a large number? Um, or percent of, of non-residents, I mean, is it of where it could be, um, of concern?
I don't know the amount, the number of students, the amount, they're paid a hundred thousand.
Can you do non-residents, um, and then, just to clarify, when you're saying, uh, non-residents, and this is, I'm, I'm just asking uh, um, a, a question just, just for, you know, just to clarify. So when you're saying non-residents, if you could also look to see residents that, that we have, say, that are possibly in our area that are here with, um, like a student visa or something, that, you know, could you provide that information as well? Just to kind of, you know, just to kind of track and see, you know, all the different segments of students as well.
But just so you know, we don't offer the F four visa program for international students, uh, that would be approved by the Department of Station. And we have that one of these in one of our board in the future, but we're not at that one. We're not know that, but we can, for sure, we can provide you with the non-resident tuition and the number of students for our, uh, education.
Okay, got it, thank you, that was my only question.
Then maybe please have your online vote, please, for the consent agenda. Sorry. Item fifteen, action item. Can I get a motion? Motion. So motion by trustee Doppler Moore, second by student trustee Collins. Do we have any discussion, trustee Carter? I'm sorry, I keep forgetting, thank you. We have to do these individual, and I forget every dog on time. So, fifteen oh one, board of trustees, business. Move. So it was, it's still the same way, right? No.
Here, just doing it, each one individually.
So it was moved by trustee Lopez, second by.
No, I, I have motion.
No, what I did is I made a mistake.
Also, we're doing it over.
We have to do it over because. So we have the first and the second that they did, we have to remove it because I'll be doing the whole thing. So now you have a new motion by trustee Lopez. And the second, I think was by Dr. Little. No? Trustee Carter, trustee Carter. Do we have any discussion? On fifteen oh one. Trustee Carter. Dr. Little, no discussion. Trustee Lopez. Trustee, uh, Dopplemore.
I can change it on imagination.
You answered, I will.
Yes.
I don't make it, oh, I don't make a comment, the board, you discussed it at the retreat. And y'all, y'all agreed that you want to, you want to say Mr. Speaker with your facilitator. And so the board didn't change it, but at the retreat, this is what y'all are doing.
That's it. I'm gonna do the second.
Fifteen oh two, twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, board of trustees, go. Can I get a motion? Move by trustee Lopez, second by trustee Dr. Little. Any discussion, trustee Carter. Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
Trustee Calvin, no discussion, please place your online vote. Item fifteen oh three, voting delegate for the Association of Community College Trustee, A C P T, can I get a motion?
We have to give a name, nothing.
Oh, yes.
Fifty oh zero together, it's gonna buy a person, both of them.
The motion first, then you do.
No, some.
Okay, now, y'all, who's going to leave, all right? Let me back up.
We're on, you're on a candidate, right, he can't vote.
Exactly, so who's going to the car? All right, then come on, which one of y'all want to be the voting delegate, you have to be there on time, because they go close their doors.
Nominate trustee.
All right, there's a motion, Dr. Little, second by trustee Dopplemore. Uh, trustee Lopez is the voting delegate.
Yeah, I will, yes.
So please, please your online vote. Oh, I do something wrong.
That's cool.
Yeah.
I heard, I agree.
Yeah.
Nice thinking.
I said, uh, Dr. Little, motion, Dr. More second, nominated trustee Lopez to be the voting delegate after car. So may I, please place your online. Fifteen oh four, administrative services, complex community college district resolution number oh nine dash twelve dash twenty twenty-three A. Budget augmentation for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion? Second. Motion by Dr. Little, second by trustee Carter. Do we have any discussion, trustee Carter? Dr. Little.
No discussion.
Trustee Lopez. Trustee Dopplemore, no discussion, no discussion, please place your online vote. Fifteen oh five, complex community college district resolution number nine dash twelve dash twenty twenty-three D. Budget transfer for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-four, can I get a motion? Moved by, uh, trustee Little. Second by trustee Lopez. Do we have any discussion, trustee Carter? Do trustee Carter, Dr. Little, you have this question? Trustee Lopez.
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
President Calvin, please place your online vote. Item fifteen oh six, contracts over a hundred nine thousand three hundred amendment. My heel partnership doing business as H P. H P I Architects Student Housing Project, can I get a motion? Motion by trustee Dopplemore, second by trustee Dr. Little. Do we have, Lopez, I'm sorry, thank y'all, I'm looking down. Do we have any discussion, student trustee Carter? Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
President Calvin, no discussion, please place your online vote. Fifteen oh seven, contracts over a hundred nine thousand three hundred, graphicated Johnson Controls Fire Protection L V, can I get a motion? Moved by trustee Little, second by trustee Dopplemore. Do we have any discussion, student trustee Carter? Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
President Calvin, no discussion, please place your online vote. Item fifteen oh eight, contracts over a hundred nine thousand three hundred amendment. Free construction in student services building project amendment, amendment number six, can I get a motion? Moved by trustee Lopez, second trustee Dopplemore, do we have any discussion, trustee Carter? Trustee Little.
It's for the, um, it's not, not back page, we're trying to pull up the other, so in terms of products that have inspector, D S A. I feel like that all appears on the construction management firm, they would keep the project, that's how I'm doing it.
Trustee Lopez. Trustee Dopplemore, no discussion. President Calvin, no discussion, please place your online vote. Fifty oh nine, contracts over a hundred nine thousand three hundred gap, can I get a motion?
Motion.
Motion by trustee Dopplemore, second by trustee Little, do we have any discussions, student trustee Carter? Dr. Little.
I think there's an available one, uh, firms that we are using, we're trying to hear his hat.
That's not included in part of the, the R F P, which also allows for top two line. But what we have done is, I mean, follow back up to find out who's doing this work on the public project. So this is a project based off the most possible data.
For certification, not as the probable nine, but this means permission to have sophisticated data from the other company.
Can you request?
It's fascinating, we already decided, right, that if you're going to say, I'm gonna ask you, there's definitely a, you know, who's a part.
Will you request that information?
Is that information, you know, R F P bars approved? Or legal access, court should have approved this approved?
We're operating. Oh, probably get, we have for commenting, so we can have a good show.
Uh, trustee Lopez. Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
No discussion from president, please place your online vote. Fifteen ten, contracts over a hundred nine thousand three hundred amendment. See, see, uh, education instruction insurance, new service building, can I get a vote? Motion by trustee Dr. Little, second by trustee Dr. More, do we have any discussion, trustee Carter? Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez. Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
No discussion for the president, please place your online vote. Item fifteen eleven, rejection of all vehicle load rules for R F P C C D dash zero seven eight, administrative building renovation, can I get a motion? Second. Motion by Dr. Little, second by trustee Lopez, do we have any discussion, student trustee Carter? Dr. Little. Trustee Lopez.
No discussion.
Trustee Dopplemore.
No discussion.
President Calvin, no discussion, please place your online vote. Item sixteen, discussion slash action. Dr. Curry will discuss the items and will request action if needed, Dr. Curry.
So item number sixteen forty zero, board is resolution, uh, presenting the board trustees. For the President's CEO to explore housing option for employees. Similar to what we did in two thousands, I think it was two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. For, we're looking at now we add a reservation, to show they're exploring this option. And so I requested the same authority to explore this option.
Um, is the action, is the, what you're requesting is to write a report letter or?
I'm requesting the board approve this resolution, to give you the authority to get exploring, uh, housing for employees. And bring it back, so the creation to.
I move the motion to support the expiration of the consent of party.
Thank you, I need a second. Okay, motion by trustee Lopez, second by student trustee Carter, any discussion? Trustee Carter. Lopez, Dr. Little. No. No discussion, no discussion. Oh, I'm sorry, I looked like a. Okay, go ahead, raise that.
Just, why not, just have a question, is, uh, is, is there a, um, is there a study? Is there, um, something that came about, we're gonna be a new core employee helping?
We did a study a couple of years ago with our students and employees. Uh, which was very challenging, but it's scheme with the food program, how successful that's been. But if you look at the market rates, I mean, doing that in, in the document. Uh, I think it would be very difficult to maintain employees in our district because of the dividend housing that's available. And so looking at that option, we did a recruitment, also intention, option for the district, and I think you cover edge as we move forward. And so we want to be able to explore and look at the options, work with our little council to try to see what it's like, it's like. Uh, just to get, we had to provide some information for it, not committing to it today, but I think it's, uh, it's, it's a right direction for the industry.
But, but is the, um, uh, purchasing land or purchasing their existing property to be refurbished?
I, I think all options are available, it could be purchasing property near the campus to build, uh, uh, to build housing. It could be maybe looking at housing on our campus, it could be looking at property within our district that's available. Maybe you, you know, to, to build, uh, housing, I think there's, the, the options are, are limited. It's just looking at what, what's available, to be able to provide or to, 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 to the board, and also looking at potential funding options in the board.
Thank you.
Please place your online vote.
I can use that.
Sixteen oh two, Dr. Alveda, is our D E S B learning and also overseeing, uh, this week. And so he's gonna provide the update on the current time of building students, Dr. Page.
Thank you, sir, thank you, good evening, brother trustees. Thank you. Yeah, I'm here to provide an update on our enrollment numbers for the, uh. For twenty twenty-three semester and compared with the previous two years, twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-one. And also to mention a couple of things that has been going on since, uh, the semester started. Uh, looking at our. Enrollment numbers as at the seventh of September twenty twenty-three, our. Unduplicated headcount. Is up by thirteen percent if we compare what we have now and twenty twenty-two. It is also up against twenty twenty-one by eleven percent. So we are doing better in terms of the unduplicated headcount. Looking at our number of seats filled. We are up nineteen percent against twenty twenty-one and seventeen percent when compared to twenty twenty-two. And the F T S that we have generated so far for the fall twenty twenty-three is at one thousand four hundred and thirty-three. Which is twenty percent higher than what we had in twenty twenty-two and also eighteen percent higher than what we had in, uh. Twenty twenty-one. So on all of these, uh, numbers, we are doing much better than what we do have. So on all of these, uh, numbers, we are doing much better than what we, how we did in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. Uh, we continue to offer classes, uh, in all modalities, in different locations, in person. Uh, make up about sixty percent of our total offerings for the whole, uh, fall semester. And the rest that are distant, remote, uh, synchronous, remote, hybrid, asynchronous, that make up the rest of the number. While we have the in-person number, even including also, uh, our classes that are in high schools, so sixty percent in person. About forty percent, uh, remote. We have also been doing a number of things to make sure that the enrollment numbers are getting better. Uh, the plan is also to continue to advertise, to make promotions of our classes, especially the midterm classes. So that we can continue to get more students enrolling in our classes and completing classes on our campus. In the month of August alone, the, uh, Educa, Office of Educational Partnership made a number of activities, a number of the outreach, uh, activities with the high schools and also the community. To make sure that we are selling out the campus to the community and also to the students at the feeder high schools. Uh, the table that shows, that follows here, shows the different activities that have been, uh, conducted. Uh, interacted with the high school students and the whole community to see, to let them know. That Compton College is still here, and we have classes open for them to come and enroll. So a total of eighty-six different activities were carried out by the Office of, uh, Educational Partnerships, interacting with as many as nineteen hundreds, uh, prospective students or, uh, current students. We are also following up on our students. Who we expect to return back to the campus, but we have not, you know, heard from them, or we are, we are not seeing them on campus. A total of about forty-one hundred calls were made. And also emails sent to different students to invite them back to come and take more classes. And also, uh, especially for those ones that were here in, uh, in spring. But we have not seen them to continue in fall twenty twenty-three, we are reaching out to all these students to come back to campus and take more classes. And the last chart that I have here is just to show how much the, uh, Welcome Center has been helping our students, assisting them in all different activities to make sure that we can guide them through whatever process that they are struggling with. In terms of, they want to take new classes, uh, they can't access the content portal, or they are trying to activate their online presence. All of those activities we'll be conducting to make sure that our students have the support for them to be able to continue on our campus, taking classes here, uh, fulfilling their goals, thank you.
And I, I just want to add, okay, Dr. Page, for this work, I just want to add to the report some new things that we've been working on. I'm amazed with the work that we're doing to support student success and retention of our students. And we might say that, because of our structure, regardless of data pathways, not success team, for each of our data pathways, the business. We have a counselor, we have student service advisor, who's following up the students and providing that support. But today was the first day I received the drop report, so our, um, council, our data factors council, data factor division, is now running reports of every seven days of students left dropped. And by data factor divisions, it's our GED by race, and they're following back up the students left dropped classes, to get them to see a counselor, and also be able to provide them with the support. We have never done that in my eighteen years at the, at the college. Where we're actually with our data system aligned, the staff is there to provide the support and follow up. And so I'm really excited about the work we're doing, not only recruiting students, but also now regarding retention and follow-up of students as well. As you heard from the IBC today, is the campus is focused on retention, everyone's talking about it. And so we're making some strides in that area, but what's key is to make sure that future drop classes, make sure they contact him and get them back into a class. And follow up with him regardless of what type of support they're getting. So I'm really excited about the work that we're doing, our cap advisors are good, but also the teacher.
Are there any questions about any order, trustee student, student trustee Garn? Trustee Lopez, any question? Trustee Dr. Moore?
Um, thank you, Dr. Page, for, um, the presentation, um, again, by Rupert, you know, tonight, and of course, it's showing in the numbers. Just the, um, um, the success, you know, just with the, the outreach, the street team, faculty and staff. So again, um, great job there, grand boss, awesome job, Dr. Currie, staff and team. Uh, but also, without right to say, like in, um, in table, you know, in table one, um, which is not, you know, shown here, but, um, I know that this work is also being done. It's just some of the, um, like, maybe some of the virtual work. You know, that's not, um, is this like all in person, right, but the in-person, but as well as the virtual touchpoints as well. And I'll say like for, you know, you have here like the, um, the phone, but also, you know, like the virtual and the text message. That's also, because that's where, you know, we're trying to meet the students like where they are, but that's also something, you know, that's also to be, you know, to be counted, because those are also very important metrics as well. So just all around what you provided here in terms of, um, in person, but also to be, um, recognized for the virtual and the other touchpoints as well, like for text messages and stuff. So again, great job, not a question, but just a comment and call up.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
You got it.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes.
Item seventeen grant item, none. Item eighteen board policies and administrative regulations, Dr. Currie will discuss real fast each hour.
So these are board policies that are reviewed, um, by the district, you have to, uh, so we have there are review for first read, for the next month, there'd be a for approval, uh, for the district, uh, if there's any questions in board members, about any policies, then let me.
You want the questions now, or are you? Do any board member have any questions, student trustee Garn?
No questions.
So can I go for the information? Okay, so the information section just has a couple of information items, I do want to highlight a couple of things, item eighteen, nineteen point zero five is the update on the Albert W. Connor State, where we're at, uh, it's a girl update, also item nineteen point zero six is updated on our foundation, as you're aware, the founder of Foundation Manager, and they're planning events, they're working on our sponsorship program, our five state department. So things are happening, so there's an update, we've got an update on accreditation nineteen point zero seven. Uh, we're looking right now, we're meeting with the team chair and the co-chair tomorrow, but we're looking at a Zoom meeting with them, October sixteenth. Uh, which will be open, and then also the campus forum will be open on Tuesday, October seventeenth, from at ten o'clock, eight. And so we're preparing for that, and more information to be shared with the board tomorrow, was that information of the team chair regards to both these events? We also put out nineteen point zero eight, a new project by the credit division, the third-party comments, which is posted online, we also did a press release as well. Could give, yeah, if anybody had any comments, you want to share with the credit division, so we took that out as well, just there for your information. Uh, the last part I want to get to for today's meeting, item number nineteen point two nine, I think you also have public comments on this one as well. This is provided, the update, as we talked about with the library in Maine, uh, the facilities committee have renewed the, uh, AR, uh, so they provide some feedback, I've shared the AR with the household family as well. And we're going to be going forward with the final revisions of this document, so we can, you know, issue revisions to the policy, which I shared with the family as well. And as I understand that, we do have public comment on the item number nineteen point two nine, and I turn it over to, uh, Stephen.
Um, so my family in Black? Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Can you, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, new, new mic. Uh, good evening, everyone, I'll be very quick. Firstly, uh, thank you for allowing us the platform to speak on this issue, um, my name is Mika Black. Um, I'm speaking on behalf of my grandmother, Emily B. Hart Holyfield. Um, there's just a couple of things that I wanted to make public record, so that there's some clarification on a few things that we've heard over the, the, the last few, uh, uh, college board meetings. Uh, that being firstly, we just want to say thank you again to Dr. Curry. Thank you to the board for hearing us over and over and over again for a little well over a year now on this, on this issue. Um, it is greatly appreciated. Um, I will also say that we want to make it clear that the party representing Emily B. Hart Holyfield and her wishes would be myself, Mika Black, and Mr. Benjamin Holyfield. That includes any other family members who bear the same name or relation. Uh, if they were to come to the meeting and say, this is what we want, it would have to come from myself or Mr. Holyfield, as we are the legal representatives of, um, of Ms. Holyfield's interests. Uh, secondly, uh, I want to make it clear, we're revisiting the issue of policy AR, um, thirty-three twenty, for the reason that when you come to campus, you see a flag, and Michelle Obama says Compton College has a story to tell, and she's one thousand percent correct. But you also see Ralph C. Dills, and you see Abel Sykes, but you see Holyfield Library. And though we are greatly appreciative for that, we want her visibility to be equal of that of her male counterparts. That is the reason why we are revisiting this policy issue. I will apologize to the board. There was a debate between if the family agreed or did not agree, I will say for the record, we agreed within the confines of the rules of the policy, which at the time stated, only a last name could go up on any future buildings. And I will admit that on a personal level, I will say that I really wanted to achieve something for my grandmother, that's, that's kind of the long and short of it. And I wanted to say that we got it done, however, we've only visited the first step, and again, hey, I've got fifteen seconds, I really want to thank Dr. Curry, um, for just really making it clear how policies work. I've learned so much in the last year or so about how change happens, or how to even approach the board. So thanks to everyone very much, and I hope we can complete this issue, thank you.
Good evening. Everyone. I feel like I'm part of this stuff, walls and everything else. Uh, Dr. Curry said it, he's been here eighteen years. She was here twenty years. She was the first woman and the first black woman elected to this college board. And there was never any issues at all. And so I'm saying to you, thank you so much for this opportunity, and what I couldn't understand. And as you know, the first thing you get is an understanding, of all things to get, you get an understanding. In other words, you communicate on an honest, in an honest manner. I couldn't understand why they didn't move the name to full name. But I'm very thankful, very happy that we did what we did, Dr. Curry, and thank you so much, boy. You see, I feel like, uh, and really, I feel like, uh, you know, when you, um, the person someplace for twenty years, and they're, and they're coming home, and they're talking about it, you all know what I'm talking about. It's, it's, um, sort of sinks in, it sort of makes you feel like something, and I can't understand. First thing you get is an understanding, I don't understand why they didn't move the full name. And, and until they do, we will, we, the community, will continue working with this, this issue. I want to thank, uh, I've been knowing you for a long time, city councilperson. These are the things that I'm saying, you're saying, we have good service. All we want to do is the right thing, and Dr. Curry, thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity, thank you. Thank all of you.
Then the item will be a future agenda item. Twenty point oh one, Compton Community Council, this reported trustees, future agenda items request. Trustee, student trustee Garn, any request? Dr. Little, any request?
Um, two things for these. Um, just for those contract ones that I asked a question about, the, and we now have it, it just went available, information on the things that we want to do, not the ones who offered it, um, and again, oh, for the full time, the FTS, if there is a way, whenever possible, if you have, if you hear the data, like was given today about the, I believe it was eleven percent and thirteen percent increase. Because the numbers are often referenced when we go with, oh, you know, like eleven thousand, twelve thousand, which are not apples and apples without the margin. So if we can just have a running narrative about the increase in numbers from, we need separate.
Trustee Lopez, or, yes, yes, does it know there's any reason? Trustee Dr. Moore? Already, you mind, I have none. And Dr. Power, not yours. Next item, maybe. Um, point point oh two, data technology?
No, this is the item for next month.
Oh, give the next one.
Yeah, so next month, yeah, yeah, next month, you have a data factory presentation, it was moved for this month, you also have a student achievement. You have an update on back in color, you have the, uh, trophy air report, which is having burger on the report on work worth development. And this is education report, and also staff.
What do you want? All report.
So I want to say thank you to, uh, the.
Resident CEO, Dr. Curry.
I want to say thank you to all the faculty, staff, and administration with regard to our movement increase, and the work that we're doing to support the retention effort in the campus. I also just want to say, there's a lot of things that are happening right now on campus, uh, a lot of activity with our student government, they have another event today. But just, there's a lot of black women on campus, a lot of people on campus, uh, one of these that I'm really excited about, every Wednesday, you see students at our farmers market. And so we'll start having some bits at the farmers market, and try to increase the amount of information we give to students. We have a captivating audience who left the farmer market every week, and so we'll be utilizing that as a way to get additional information out for our students. And then we also have a problem with our cashier, we have more students taking advantage of the food that we have, and so Mr. James is continuing to make sure that we get a, the, the delivery, we've been, uh, averaging about seven hundred meals a day, we think that is increased to about eight hundred meals a day, because of the amount of demand. But that tells you the, uh, the needs of our students, as we've got also our employees, about food, and our cashier, versus in general, for our students, their needs regards to food, and housing, and food industry. And so I'm really excited about the work that's being done on the campus, it's been very busy, but a lot of things are happening with our power, with the technology, that's my word.
Uh, student trustee Garn?
Uh, the conference part is very short, I mean, I know there are, have nice conferences coming out in October, and I think we're going to have a speaking for that, and I think excited about. So please make sure you guys are going to love this conference. Please stop by and see it. I will actually be going with R V E Jones, um, the hotel as well. Um, other hat, this semester is very, very, very I learned a lot from these guys already, but um I'm ready for it. Thank you guys for coming out today. So it's been a great time.
Just be over there. No, no. Just be Dr. Little.
Yes, I just want to thank everyone for being in the meeting. Also, uh, want to thank the intrigue and the fact that especially um about the excitement of all the practices to increase the student enrollment and the engagement of the the leaders and programmatic around using that for the mission. Um, I think that as we continue um under our own dependence, you know, and continue to work as a collaborative uh, this is showing that we're seeing the benefits, albeit as we've been organization found this, but at least a very um, a very outward trajectory. I'm very excited about that. Um, I would also like to commend our student trustee who is immersed in a lot of different activities, you know, the notion to her participation at A U C T, uh, as we've agreed and been invited to be on a panel that will be held on COVID nineteen, which will be here quite soon for a virtual panel hosted and sponsored by the Health Frank Community College and Women's Office, uh, speaking about navigating one of the cultural journeys, looking at politics, pain and power around gender equity, even stereotypes, uh, promotions, pay equity, and many other things. So thank you, student trustee Collins, for agreeing to represent family contact college, but to represent students of all, they were very important conversations. Would also just like to continue to invite our broader community uh to be more and more engaged. Thank you, Dr. Curry and your team. One request, I would find look on Compton dot P V U under events. And I don't know if we have a link to community events that we all want to think this, but I can find it. We do have a calendar of events, but it didn't show external community events that are on the calendar unless uh on the checklist. After my run hour search. So I don't know if there is a way, I know that local severity is going to be, if they matter in the festival, the car show. I think it's really good to be able to share with our broader community to show how the college is inviting, waging the community. So if you please find a way, or maybe someone can just help me find it. I would appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Just be down the wall?
Yes, I would like to say um, I'm happy Hispanic Heritage Month. I know we are very diverse and we celebrate um a lot of different cultures, so I'm just going to put that out and just say, um, if you have not done so, um, attend, you know, a vote, you know, event in the community and all. Um, I received an invite and I will be attending the one um in Compton. And if there is one that is in um Paramount and other communities, if time permits, I'll be attending those as well. Great opportunity to get out and meet with the community and um, you know, wear some Compton swag and you know, probably can, you know, possible connect with um uh future students that are in our area. And also I had the opportunity to attend um a pre um reception for the new superintendent for Paramount New Council District. So I would um like to say um, welcome Dr. Joshua L. Lidle. Looking forward to um working with him and the additional members of the Paramount New Council District um board as well as um the city council. Um, and that's all I have to report. Thank you, Dan.
You're so welcome. I will be having my community meeting this Thursday from six to eight P M at the N H S building, which is Rose Grant and Dwight. Uh, I know they are addressing him, something Rose Grant saw this, tell you, Rose Grant and Dwight in front of uh Gonzalez Park. I'm looking forward to this. Our student trustee is the guest speaker. And so is the A S B president. Want to hear from the students, students that went to this college, doing group enrollment and uh went there, doing that. There's one student that couldn't come because I think she's at USC or the UCLA. So she's not able to come, but they were real students, you know, that student. So to come out and hear what's going on. I did give Miss Deborah a copy of the flyer so she can come in here on my council committee, so we better know. And uh, thank you, everybody. It is um next regular scheduled board meeting, low set is October the seventeenth, twenty twenty three. Low session begins at five, open session begins at six, and this meeting will not during the morning, that's seven fifty-eight. Seven fifty-eight meeting, there I thank y'all.
I mean, I don't even know what's the head, you know, what I'm thinking of that. Another, we're getting on the to have. We're, 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 they want, no, I know, but it was the family, it was the, it was the family, she didn't want it. Yeah. They know the problem. Someone's stupid, we got here. Yeah. Now we give that.
Okay, appreciate.
Uh, keeping me busy. Thank you very much.